And welcome to the first edition of Midwest City Council for 2019. It looks like it's gonna be a fun one. Glad everybody's here. I hope everybody had a good Christmas and a good new year. It promises to be a good new year for, for the city of Midwest City as well. With that being said, call this meeting to order. I'd like to call Mr. Sullivan down to offer our invocation and all lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Gracious Lord, we come before your throne this evening with humble hearts. Father, we're asking your blessing be upon this evening and the activities of this mayor and this council. Father, as we begin a new year, we pray that this would be a year of peace and prosperity for our community and our nation as well. Father, we just, we know that hearts are heavy tonight, concerned about our city manager, and we just ask a blessing be upon him and the physicians who are working on him and making a diagnosis, Father, just to bless their hands and the training and the gift that you've given them. Terry as well, and the children, give them comfort and peace during this time. Father, we thank you for these men and women who are willing to serve in this capacity, sacrifice time from family, from careers, friendships. They have difficult decisions before them tonight, Lord, and I ask your discernment and your blessing be upon them. Give them peace in their decisions. Father, we thank you for the great community that we enjoy, and we give you glory and the honor for that. It's a great place to live and work and play. Thank you for this beautiful state and nation, and those who are willing to protect us and defend our freedoms all over the world as we speak. Give them peace and comfort and safety. Ultimately, Lord, we thank you for the ultimate example of selfless sacrifice through you and your son, and the blood that was shed on the cross for us. Thank you. We ask these favors in your son's holy name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Community-related announcements. Anybody on the horseshoes? Ms. Eads, you got stuff?
I have one, Mayor. Tomorrow is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and there's a request for everybody to wear blue to show support for our law enforcement, and so take a moment and thank our law enforcement for everything they do for us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for reminding us of that.
And I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we have the twenty-second annual Midwest City. Can you hear me? Is it on? Thank you. The twenty-second annual Midwest City, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., parapropers here in Midwest City, January the twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at the Sheraton here in Midwest City, the City Reed Center, and it will start at seven a.m. until nine. That's what time the door opened at, seven a.m. It is a great event. We have a great keynote speaker, Senator George Young. So I'd like for everyone to come out. I'm sure you enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Tim?
Reminder, we have a daddy-daughter dance on February ninth at the Reed Center. There'll be three sessions at, starting at four p.m., six p.m., and eight p.m. Tickets are on sale at the Parks and Rec Department for fifteen dollars each. Also, recycling and trash services will run normally on Martin Luther King Day, which is observed on Monday, January twenty-first. And our sales tax check, we got in this morning, just a brief look at the first, this is the second half of November and the first half of December, so this includes quite a bit of our Christmas sales. But, um, sales and use tax versus projection, we were up seven point three percent for this year, for this time period. So overall, for fiscal year, starting July one, um, through date of January eighth, we're at four point nine four percent above projection. So that's a good thing.
Okay, I need to-
A decent Christmas.
I need to also advise you that if you want to buy tickets, you can call seven three nine one two nine three, or you can go to the Midwest City Community Center at two hundred North Midwest City Boulevard. Thank you.
And breakfast starts at eight in the program, I mean breakfast at seven and the program at eight?
Yes, the doors open at seven a.m. and the program starts at eight a.m.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for shopping Midwest City, y'all. Any other community related announcements? Hearing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agendas so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. That being said, Chair to entertain a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hang on one second, Mayor.
Okay, let's back up which items.
No, we just, we can do- I can just do it right now, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I can just do it right now.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Ward five?
Aye.
Ward six?
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. You're welcome. Okay, move into our discussion items. First discussion item?
Okay, this is, do we have a number on that one? What is the number? Discussion item one. Discussion consideration approval of Nash's addition minor plat located in the southeast quarter of section twelve, township eleven, north R two west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. Billy?
Thanks, you, Mr. Line. Um, yes, this is a minor plat. It's been requested of an existing subdivision to combine a lot on the, uh, rear of one of the lots, to combine those to be able to build a large shop out on the rear part. It has to be subdivided because the, the lot that's on the rear is, is landlocked, and so this just makes it official, so it has a, a frontage on it. The property is owned by Lowell and Marcella Nash, and Planning Commission and staff recommend approval, and this is off the spur drive at the end of the cul-de-sac. Be glad to answer any questions.
Billy, I have one question. On page three, under the drainage and flood control, the first sentence on there talks about where the water from this property goes. And in, in your memo, it says it goes north to south. Okay. The, the water that comes out of, off of this property and the property over there on spur drive, it goes down the fence line at Orchard, right?
Um, there's a drainage flume off the rear of the prop, uh, the rear of Orchard, and it follows that, and I touched base with Patrick, the Minifire City Engineer, before the meeting, and if they build on the north part of this lot, the building, he'll make sure that the drainage is going to the north and kind of east to follow the drainage into, to railroad, and if it's on the south part, it will fall into that, the drainage will fall into that, that, that channel and go, go south.
Okay.
As described.
Which leads to my next question. Who built that, the drainage ditch?
Along the east side of the Orchard?
Correct.
Orchard did.
Okay, was that done by the developer or by the property owners?
It was done by the developer.
As part of the-
Part of the development.
Okay. I need to, based off of that, I need to talk to you, and I've already forwarded the city manager about an issue over there.
Sure, and, and actually, we have some information for you today, and we'll be glad to-
So you know why I'm asking you?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted, because I couldn't tell on the map.
Right.
I, I looked, and I didn't want to walk over there either, but, uh-
So we, we have some proposals that we're trying to work through, and, and we can go walk the site if you'd like to, and, and it's, it's as far as the Orchard drainage issues. Wherever of them, we've, we've, over the past several years, we've tried to, to, to patch up some of the, the drainage issues.
It got really, really bad over the holidays.
Right, right.
Okay.
So wherever of them, and we'll, we'll visit with you on them.
Okay, and like I said, I couldn't tell from, it looked like there was improved drainage there, but I, I really couldn't tell.
There, there is.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Is applicant in the audience? I guess not. So if there's no further discussion on discussion item number one, Chair to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Okay, we'll move into discussion item number two.
Discussion item number two. Discussion item number two, PC nineteen eighty-three, public hearing with discussion and consideration of approval of an ordinance redistricting from R six, single-family detached residential to a planned unit development, PUD governed by R six, single-family detached residential district for the property described as part of the northeast quarter of section one, township eleven, north R two west, located in the five hundred block of St. Paul Avenue. Mr. Harless?
Thank you, Mr. Line. Um, yes, I think the council is somewhat familiar with this item as we've heard it last year, but the owner is Walter and Sarah Ballou. Uh, the applicant is Frank McLendon, and the engineer is Derek Jackson. Uh, this PUD request is for single-family development, and the applicant is bringing it forward to, to, as a PUD, and asking for a request of the variance of the cul-de-sac length. Our ordinances suggest that, that most cul-de-sacs should be at five hundred feet, um, and then, uh, and then upon design requirements or the requirements of the lay, lay of the land, um, they could be up to a thousand feet, and if it, um, and with the exception, also under a PUD to extend farther than a thousand feet, and that's what the applicant's requesting here. When y'all heard this last year, there were a number of concerns brought up to, uh, by the surrounding property owners and staff, and the applicant has, has done, uh, tried to remedy a lot of those issues, such as the wetlands, whether it was a registered wetlands or, or not, and it was, and they did receive a, a letter from the, the Fish and Wildlife as to, to that wetlands could be demolished or filled in. Um, there were some concerns about toxit, toxicity of the, of the, the property there or the land, and it was tested by DEQ, and there was no toxins in the, in, in the water. Um, and then, um, the, the biggest concern is the, the drainage that comes through the property and then goes into the creeks and the surrounding properties, as we've been put on notice by previous property owners and, and landowners that there's a lot of drainage issues there. Um, this is also brought up by the, the, the amount of density in the, uh, on the property. But through the review process, uh, the applicant did reduce the lots from thirty-eight to thirty-five, um, and then through the planning commission and, and, and also through the staff. Uh, it, it needs to be noted that, that we're concerned that there's also drainage issues, and, and the current design, let's see if I can pull that up real quick. Uh, the current design reflects, uh, the lots and the cul-de-sac as one lot for drainage, and staff, and the applicant acknowledges that there's the need to, to do, uh, multi-detention facilities within, within this, within this design. And, uh, so anyway, the planning commission and, and staff recommended approval, but, um, we still have concern about, concerns about a density and about drainage on, on the project going forward. And, and if it, if it does go forward, I want to make sure that, that's in, that, that's a point that will have to be addressed going forward. I'll be glad to answer any questions, uh, this time.
This is a public hearing, and, uh, Mr. Melton, you signed up to address the council. Would you like to?
My name's David Melton. I live at five twenty South St. Paul, Midwest City. Mayor, council, good evening. We have several objections or concerns with this, uh, PUD. Most of them, Billy already covered a little bit, or just briefed over them very quickly. As you know, we had a September eleventh meeting. The applicant re- removed his application that night. We had approximately probably fifty residents here that evening opposing that. You may not have that many this evening, but that could be partly because of the time change, uh, just different activities going on. But all the concerns of a residence are still there. They haven't gone away. One of the mercs, uh, the residents here comprise of St. Paul, Fourth Street, Sixth Street, Nwasa, Emily Lane, Cassidy Court, and Davidson. So it's all the surrounding area of this land. I can only assume, and, uh, you've said that the developer has met some of the requirements as to why he removed his application before, but he hasn't met all of them. I know there's a preliminary survey from a private company called Enron or Incon, and that's just a survey. It is not a letter from the Department of Wildlife, which has not been received yet, from my knowledge. One of our main concerns is increased traffic flow. St. Paul is a dead-end street. There's one way in, one way out. St. Paul, um, services about a hundred residents, and when you add thirty-four more residents to that, that's going to increase traffic tremendously. Of course, Nwasa is a private road, so that is not a legal way out. When ordinance is written, this is about the length of the cul-de-sac, when ordinance are written, there's input from several people, including city staff, planning commission, buyer marshal, and of course, the city council. These regulations are written for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Whenever we decide to go above and beyond at least two times that, we need to give serious consideration to that. The length of the cul-de-sac is five hundred feet. It's written in ordinance. Yes, there is a, a variance to up to a thousand, and under a PUD, it can go over a thousand. But my concern is, when you're going over a thousand, what about the safety and concern of those residents along the cul-de-sac? Are we just going to disregard that? I don't know. I don't know why that was written with five hundred, five hundred feet. Billy at the planning commission said that the city didn't want a lot of long cul-de-sacs. So here we are with the long cul-de-sac. Water runoff has become a primary concern with how it will be contained or slowed to acceptable standards. Along St. Paul, we only have one storm drain, approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the end of the street. I don't know if anyone has looked at how the proposed road will affect St. Paul, if it'll drain out onto St. Paul, or if the runoff off St. Paul will run down the proposed Fifth Street, which is going to increase even more water down there. Uh, December twenty-sixth, we had a lot of rain. St. Paul, right where that road is proposed, was covered, flooded. So that water has to go somewhere, and is it going to be Fifth Street? Is that going to contribute? Or is St. Paul going to contribute to what goes down Fifth Street and towards the end of this development? So I think there needs to be some consideration there. Another one of our issues is the density. As per the ordinance, um, under planned unit development, innovative land, land development. Encourage innovative land development while maintaining appropriate limitations on the character intensity of use, assuring capable compatibility with adjoining and proximate properties and following the guidelines of the comprehensive plan. Fourth Street has a density level of two point one three houses per acre. That is from the city's notes. Sixth Street has two. This plan, uh, the plan submitted is four point three three. The lots on fourth three, Fourth Street, excuse me, are sixty-three point three feet wide, and Sixth Street is sixty-three point seven five feet wide. The development as proposed is fifty-six feet and sixty feet wide, not quite similar to the appropriate area. So that, that is another reason that, you know, we, we contend or contest this development. I do have a question about setbacks. Is a setback measured from the foundation, or is that from like the roofline? Billy, do you know that answer?
Um, it gives a, a certain amount of, it's a certain amount of, of setback for the, the overhang of the, the soffit, um, but basically it's from the front of the building.
It's from the building, not the soffit?
You're allowed, I, I think it's a foot and a half or two feet for the soffit to, to hang over the, the building line.
Okay. Well, the way I read the requirements in here, it says zoning ordinance include, including but not limited to eighty-five percent masonry materials, twenty-five foot setbacks, seven foot side setbacks, and twenty foot rear setbacks. So if the street is twenty-six feet wide, within twenty-five feet of that curb on either side, there cannot be any dwellings, right?
Between the setbacks?
Correct.
Right.
I'm going to assume it's from the curb. Well, it's from the center of the street? Well, it, it doesn't actually say in here that it's from the center, so I was assuming it's from the, from the curb. So we can build a, we can build a house thirteen feet away from the road.
But if there's another, he was saying that there's another reason on top of that. No, I take it back. From the center of the street, the street is twenty-six feet wide.
Correct.
So the center of the street to the curb is thirteen, and add another twelve, is your twenty-five, that twelve is your each. So from the center of the street to the actual property is twenty-five feet, and then from that point, you live through the twenty-foot building. Or twenty-five, whatever you go to set like this.
Say that one more time, please.
From the center of the street to the property line is twenty-five feet. Yeah.
From the center of the street to the curb is twelve and a thirteen.
Well, I said it a different way. From the center of the street to the curb is thirteen, and then another twelve is these, that's where the lot starts. So that would be twenty-five feet from the center of the street, and then at that point though, you got another, you're twenty-five foot building.
Okay.
So you're fifty feet from the center of the road. Fifty feet from the center of the road before you can have destruction.
Fifty feet, fifty, fifty feet from the center of the road. So in the feet, the road's thirteen, so you're talking thirty-seven. Is that right? So thirty-seven and thirty-seven is what, seventy-four? My question about that has to do with, uh, the road going in between two houses. I don't know that it, it's an issue, but the houses are less than seventy-five feet apart. And you're putting a twenty-six foot road in there. And I, my understanding was, at one time, they tried to do it on the north end, and it wasn't wide enough. So now we're talking on the south end with the street coming through, with the street that's, you know, going to be twenty-six feet wide, and, you know, the houses are seventy-four point eight feet apart. So I was thinking those would have to fall into those setback regulations, which don't quite, I, I guess do fall into the, based on our math tonight.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't want to split hairs or split inches in this case, um, or feet, um, but really, we're listening to the zoning portion of this, and then that if it's zoned, we would get into actually having feedback and all, all those type of things, but-
But it's still an issue that we have, but, uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions from me or whatever, but as neighbors, neighbors of this proposed development, we appreciate you hearing our concerns this evening, and we ask that, you know, you consider our wishes in, as far as our neighborhood, not only the city's needs, so. Any questions?
So, one question I often have when a property owner wants to build something, and the neighbors surrounding her are against it. Are you guys against it because you want that piece of land where you get up every morning and you have your cup of coffee and you don't ever see a house? Or are there, is there a development that could be done that the majority of you would say, okay, we're fine with?
You're correct on that last statement, yes.
That if, if development was done differently, you guys would probably not be opposed, is what I'm hearing.
Right, I mean, you're talking about a PUD that, that has to be compatible with the surrounding area, correct?
I, I was just making sure there's, it's called not in my backyard.
Right.
And I was just making sure that that's not what this was, that no matter what was proposed, you guys would say no.
No, we're, we're not, we're not, uh, there. Absolutely not. We want something sensible that fits the area.
Okay.
You know, and-
Understand, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't not in my backyard, no matter what was done, you guys were going to say no.
No, absolutely not. I don't know that, you know, two, uh, the density of two per acre is the proper number, but four point three or four point two, whatever it is, is not the proper number for that area. We're more in a rural setting, and you can't take an urban setting and put it right into a rural setting, I don't think. And that's our biggest contention.
I can agree with Mr. Melton. I mean, his, you're in an area, if I remember the comprehensive plan, they tried to look at some of that where you're not approving developments that are out of line with the neighboring properties, so he's got a good point there. And I know Billy, over the years, their department, they, they try not to let these tracts of land come up like this. He calls them flag lots or what, what's some of your different terminology, but this was approved over the years, and I, I mean, I hate, I'd hate to be one of the property owners where that lot was, you know, you've got a street now through the, right next door, and that's why they try not to do these flag lots where you're creating this type of environment for a development. But on the other hand, a landowner's got a right to develop his property within the, you know, correct zoning, and, and I think where Sean was coming is, you know, there's not much you can do. If the developer follows every rule and every regulation and builds the proper size, it's really hard for the city to turn it down. But, uh, and I, but I don't personally agree with, with this development in particular.
Is there any further discussion or, uh, questions, Mr. Melton?
Is there anybody else that's-
The right plan, um, for that land, you know, my concern is that, you know, that's going to come right out my yard. That, that street is, you know, so I'm going to have thirty-five more houses of thirty-four, whatever. You know, so I'm gonna have thirty-five more houses or thirty-four, whatever it is, traffic coming right there every day, night and, or morning and night. Um, and so I, I think that, you know, the density is the biggest level, you know? Um, when you're talking about half acre lots on Sixth Street and, uh, I think third acre lots on Fourth Street, I mean, that, that's different, you know, and when you're talking about frontage, um, the frontage lots on Fourth Street are sixty-three point three and Sixth Street is sixty-three point seven five, and the developers proposing fifty-six and sixty. Now, seven feet may not sound like a lot, but that will limit the number of houses that can be developed in that area, which also will make it look like it fits. So, that's, that's our biggest contention, I would say.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Melton.
Patrick, I don't know if you want to address that letter?
Is there anybody else from your neighborhood that wants to talk? Or is, is basically what he said is what you all agree to?
I think most everybody, you know, who's paid on where they live, they may have a little bit different concern, but I think I addressed most all of it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify one point that Mr. Melon brought up. Uh, the environmental review was done on this, and it was passed. It follows the statutes of the state's file, wildlife and fish and game departments. So, uh, I just wanted to be noted that that has been resolved. Um, that, that is not, uh, up for debate anymore.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, could you, uh, state your name and address, please?
Can I address that real quick?
Did that hurt my nerves?
No, that, that.
My, my, well, you meant the wildlife thing, that it was addressed, it was addressed by a private firm, we haven't received a letter from the Department of Wildlife. They're putting, they're putting their recommendation into the Wildlife Department, which then will require, or will present a letter, correct?
Actually, no, sir, it was already determined through that company as the environmental evaluator of the site.
But he's asking, is the state, basically, Department of Wildlife, a letter, have they signed off on this, is that what you're?
Yes, well, uh, Mr. Reed, that's the whole point of having the survey done on it, is that it already meets all the qualifications. The Fish and Wildlife Department already approves it through state statute, that it meets all the regulations. They're, they're not gonna set, turn around and, and turn, churn out another form letter. It, it already meets all the qualifications.
The way, and I, I may be wrong, I didn't bring it with me, sorry. But the way I read that letter is they're gonna determine, or put their determinations for those on to the Wildlife Department, and then they are going to, um.
This was what was on your agenda. Um, it's specifically different in your letter versus what is in Jackson, Jackson Engineering. It specifically says it's not been approved by the Corps of Engineers. Would you like me to read that paragraph?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't mean those.
Okay, let's, uh, let's let this lady talk and then we'll clarify this.
Okay. I assure you, this has been.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Sylvia Wallace Greer, address seven zero one South St. Paul Avenue. Um, I'm not gonna say I'm good at speaking, so I'm gonna speak from the heart. We are not against development. Midwest City is growing with leaps and bounds. And we want Midwest City to represent Midwest City. The development of that land, we welcome. Even though it's an older neighborhood, and when you drive down there, it's a clean neighborhood, but its value has the potential of all surrounding ends. When you look at the other housing areas in that area, we would like to get to that point that our residential area we could be proud of, not to have an area that is congested. What happens with all that traffic? Right now, when we go down the street, we have to wait as cars passes by on St. Paul. We're talking about a cul-de-sac, we're talking about thirty-two homes. What happens when we need emergency vehicles? What happens when the kids is in the area? When you get to the point where you start rezoning, we, we are fighting now for businesses that are tempted, under the wire, to come in to have it as a business area. And I understand a lot of the things that's going on in the community, you all will not know unless someone speaks out. When we do speak out, we're concerned about our livelihood. Are we making the right decision or the wrong decisions? But what we do know, that it is a family-friendly, child-oriented community that's not high crime, that we look after each other. All we're asking, even though it is an older neighborhood, allow it to be that the kids could enjoy that little pleasure of nature, where they are, have the freedom to walk the neighborhood as a family unit without the congestion. If we wanna complain right now, just, people drag race that neighborhood. We don't know the cars, we just hear the speeding. No one addresses that, we're talking about the safety. We want it to be developed, but we don't want it to be as if we are a throwaway area because it's up in age and original owners are dying out. We want the development, but let it be conclusive as the area that surrounds it. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Byrne, did you wanna?
Yeah, I wanna let the property owner, the developer, speak.
Advocate, would you care to address counsel?
Good evening, uh, Frank McLendon, seventeen twenty-three Britton Road, Oklahoma City. Um, thank you guys for, for hearing us again, uh, about this deal. Again, when I, uh, submit a application for a planned unit development, um, it is with the, uh, with the heart of trying to, uh, meet all the city codes and ordinances that, uh, that you guys have provided for, you know, the safety of the community. Uh, and I believe, uh, to, uh, address the ordinance, um, it, uh, requires that you do do a planned unit development if your street is longer than a thousand feet, in which this is, by a hundred and eighty feet. Um, and it also provides for, uh, uh, islands in the middle of the road to slow down speeding, and, uh, and it, it actually says that in the ordinance to, to give some sort of remedy to that. And, uh, we fully plan to do that, uh, um, at the, at the plating hearing. As well as, uh, address drainage issues, uh, that have been brought up by planning, uh, and staff, um, about that, the one drainage area, and we are going to do, uh, all that is required to, um, uh, provide for the drainage of this, uh, of this area. And it's not our intention to increase the drainage downstream or, uh, next door to our neighbors. Um, so, uh, along with the, uh, Planning Commission's approval, uh, I would, uh, request that, uh, City Council approves this planned unit development.
Thank you, sir, for making.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got four call for vote. I'm, I'm, I was well, I'm well aware that at some point this property's gonna be developed. The owner has a right to sell it, and the developer has a right to develop it. And I was very pleased to hear that the people over there aren't opposed to development, because we need it. As members of the City Council, we're tasked with reviewing what city staff provides us after it goes through a process, including the Planning Commission. During that process, I was reminded that previous council generally follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission. I can't speak for other members of the council, but I feel like as an elected official, I have a duty and responsibility to, number one, have an open mind when city staff brings us a project. And I believe we have the duty to also review all the information we're given, ask as many questions as we have, listen to both sides if there's a disagreement, and if needed, go look at the property in question. And if appropriate, go look at similar projects to the one in question, and I've done all the, all that. First thing, in almost the three years I've been on the council, and Billy can attest to this, and Patrick, stormwater runoff has probably been my main focus. Um, in fact, you heard from a previous discussion. That is a huge, huge issue with me, in the flooding of the properties that are caused by stormwater runoff. Members, members of the council, we are all aware, there are particular issues in locations in this city where the citizens have come and asked us for help, and we can't help them because the process has gone too far. For various reasons, the issues that cause those complaints were not addressed when the development was built. One thing I did while trying to figure out how I was gonna vote on this particular item was to visit a development at the request of the property owner that was being developed under the same concept and the same developer. I did that yesterday. After doing so, I'm convinced beyond a shadow of a doubt, I can't support this. I walked the detention area, and I'm certainly not an engineer, but I have serious concerns about how that is gonna work and where the water's gonna enter and where it's gonna leave. The other concern I had when I visited this neighborhood was that there's signs advertising that some of those homes will be rental properties, which is one of the things you all addressed. We need owner-occupied, not more rental or investment properties in Midwest City. We have an abundance of empty rental property in several areas of the city. Code enforcement, and we had a discussion earlier tonight, must spend a significant amount of time dealing with code violation by absent landlords. We don't need to increase their workload when it's not necessary. This concern becomes even bigger for me because in a report that Mr. Harlos, Harless provided on page four, it says, under drainage and flood control, it states, drainage across the area of request is from the east to the west to the south via overland flow, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, currently, the area of request where that water is now gonna be directed is undeveloped off of Davidson. Drainage from that site continues west, joining an unimproved channel that drains southwest, eventually draining into Soldier Creek Tributary six, and that's verbatim out of your report. If that statement is true, the water eventually makes it way, makes its way into the drainage system that leads to the concrete drainage system behind the wassa, which is already past its capacity. Another concern I have is related to a map that Mr. Harless provided in her package. It's identified as drainage location map for PC nineteen eighty-three, not my map, it's Billy's. On this map, there are arrows that document how the water will flow to the southwest over the property of another individual on Davidson. Admittedly, those two acre lots, which are owned by the same person, but this person has the right not to get wet also. And if he wants to develop that property, if there's gonna be an un, enormous or an increasingly amount of water on his property, he's not gonna be able to. That property's also getting drainage from Emily Lane. Now we're gonna put more water in that area. I respect the fact that the engineer for this project has basically said the water will not have an impact on the other properties, but I am not a hundred percent convinced that issues will not occur, and we've all seen them up here. If we approve this project, the eight acres of land and vegetation where water has been able to flow naturally for years, and the land absorb some of the water, will completely change. One of the things I've learned from Mr. Harless and Mr. Menefee, over the times that I've met with him, is when you disturb land with rooftops, streets, driveways, and other items that don't let water absorb, the water's gotta go somewhere. In this development, the water's gonna go on to other property, which could adversely affect the ability to develop it. On top of the water issue, the other concern I have is increase in traffic. This was a concern that was brought up in the community meeting on September eleventh, and I remember we talked to you about it. And it's been dismissed, there's nothing that's been done about that. If thirty-five additional homes are added, we can count on an additional seventy-plus vehicles a day. No matter what is said, and I concur with what was said from one of the citizens, is it's one way in and one way out. If the traffic from this neighborhood starts to use new wassa as an entrance or an exit, I can promise you that group of homeowners will be in here addressing the use of private drive. If we approve this, we'd better budget for a traffic light at St. Paul and Reno. When I made a decision to vote for or against this particular project, I had to take into consideration how my vote would affect the overall quality of life for the area of this project and the city as a whole. As I stated when I started, I fully expected at some time, this place, this piece of property will be developed. But I'm against it in the current plan, and I call for a vote in the roll call.
I, I have one more question. I, I know that at some point, as, as we all know, it will be developed. What if they were to, what if they, um, if the owner would like to build apartments? Is that something that you all would want is apartments, or? So, uh, now, Billy, what is this, uh, what is it zoned for, is, is it, is it zoned for business, or?
It's zoned, uh, R six, residential six thousand, so the minimum lot size would be six thousand square feet.
So, at some point, it's gonna be developed in some residential between apartments and, and.
Uh, it, it would not, it would not likely be, it would have to come through for rezoning for apartments.
For apartments, okay, so it'd be residential, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, well, you done, I apologize.
Oh, go ahead, you're fine.
Before any roll call votes taken, I wanna make sure that if David has anything he would like to say, that he has that opportunity.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, uh, David Blue, that's, uh, September eighteenth, North, uh, North of the property. Thank you. Um, primarily up here, 'cause I wanna be sure we're making a clear distinction between what happened on September eleventh and what could, may or may not happen this evening. Um, the, the staff has a seventy-eight page report on this property, of which I've carefully read every word of it, and there were four issues in Sep-, on September eleventh. And every one of those issues has been addressed and met to the satisfaction of the staff. And so what you didn't have in September eleventh was a staff's recommendation for approval. What you have this evening is staff's recommendation for approval. And you have a unanimous vote from your Planning Commission saying they agree with what's been presented in this report. Now, just so we're all clear on a few items, not in any particular order, I'll start with drainage, since that seems to be the tall pole in the tent. The drainage that was done was reviewed by three different sets of engineers. This gentleman right here, a third-party consultant that the city hires, and the engineer that's responsible for developing the property. And while I listen to the arguments of this councilperson, I have to disagree completely with almost every word he said. We have a tendency to punish new development for sins of past developments, like we're gonna get it right by making it more difficult. Today, the laws in Oklahoma for stormwater runoff don't say that you can put the same amount of water down that unimproved tributary at the southwest corner of the property that eventually meets up with a concrete viaduct that leads into, uh, Soldier Creek Tributary six. They say that it has to be less than the historic runoff. So three different engineers, working independently of each other, have presented an almost forty-page report that says they're gonna do everything they can to get this right. And so I don't know why we would naively, in this chamber, think that we're gonna sit around and get it better by some future development coming in and saying, oh, we know more about hydrology than that last group of people did. Let me assure you one thing, the rains we have, does anybody build their church for Easter Sunday? You can't handle the rain, the stormwater runoff on a hundred or a fifty-year event, is that correct, Patrick? If, if you design a detention pond for that property and have a hundred-year event, will it adequately? will it adequately handle the water for that event?
Yes, sir, that's how it's designed. That's the minimum design standard.
And, and, and you know what? I'll stand right here and say that most of the time, that doesn't happen. Mr. Reed, and I appreciate you recognizing me and asking me to come forward. So, I believe that the issue of drainage has been adequately addressed by the developer, by city staff. They've given you their recommendation, and the planning commission has unanimously voted in favor of that. The process either works or it doesn't, and in this case, it sounds like it's not working. Move to the next point. And by the way, one more thing on drainage. The water never runs from west-east, so there's not gonna be any water on St. Paul. I've owned the property for sixty-five years. I've got some idea where the water goes. Okay, it goes from east to west, and anything that overflowed out of that pond went to the southwest corner of the property and into an unimproved channel, and then into Tributary six. There's not even water coming back on St. Paul. Plus, the developer mentioned that in the PUD, there are two traffic calming roundabouts that are not just roundabouts, they're also additional detention areas. There'll be three detention areas, not one like he saw.
I, I didn't hear him mention roundabouts. I heard him mention speed bumps.
Well, read the report. He didn't say everything that's in the report, Sean. It's, you want me to get it and read it for you?
No, I just, he didn't mention.
And that's why I'm up here, because there's a lot of things that aren't getting mentioned, okay? Billy, are there two traffic calming roundabouts?
There are, there are, there, there is a verbiage that says there will be roundabouts, and, and I apologize for not bringing that up. Um, and probably, and what I meant to say was, this is what's the proposal. It's up on the screen. It just shows a single cul-de-sac going down, that when it, when, if this does pass, and when you see it again during the plating process, it will, it will change because they have to, 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 uh, add the extra, uh, detention facilities in there, um, and.
I apologize. I'm a very visual person. When I see that, I don't see roundabouts anywhere. I don't see anywhere a water's gonna be detained. I don't see any of those things. I see a straight street with the cul-de-sac on the end.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I didn't speak with clarity.
Okay, but I, I'm still, I'm still a visual person. We've had three hundred and forty-five pages to read.
Yeah.
And when I see, I, I know which parts to read. I was on the planning commission, and so I know how to skim through certain things. I know how to look at gradients. I know how to look at drainage. I know how to look at a map. And that doesn't show what you're now proposing, which is very difficult for us to make an informed decision. When the vast majority of people are visual and they see that, there's nothing up there that addresses how there's going to be two roundabouts in there.
Okay, and, and all I can.
I know, I believe you. I'm just saying when it's, you don't see it up there.
And that's what causes staff's concern going forward, should this go forward, is that it's said verbally, but there's nothing in it besides just verbally saying it'll be done in there.
Okay, Mr. Blue, press on with your next point.
Okay, uh, Mayor, uh, quickly, three different people have mentioned safety, so let me just go cut to the chase. The fire marshal has to review a PUD just like everybody else. And at the end of this development would be a ninety-six-foot cul-de-sac with twenty-six-foot wide access, which will allow all emergency vehicles access to this fifth street, should it get developed. I argue that Fourth Street and Sixth Street and even St. Paul can't meet that requirement. So, we can't be worried too much about safety. When, when that, those streets were first put in, the Middale School District adopted the longer snub-nosed buses that were forty-two feet long. And at that point in time, in the mid-seventies, those buses were able to turn around at the end of both Fourth Street and Sixth Street. They can't anymore. So, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call BS on the safety issue. This would be the only street in that area that would be safe, that emergency vehicle could come and do what they're supposed to do and properly get in and out. The other ones don't accommodate it. Uh, so, let's move on to the things that weren't addressed. The density was thirty-eight lots, now it's down to thirty-four. Um, I'm, I guess this is the elephant in the room. I don't know. Maybe I'm missing something. I'm obviously got on blinders and can't see the big picture here. There are thirty-two streets on, houses on one street and thirty-four on another, and there're gonna be thirty-four on this one. So, when you drive down all three streets, you're gonna see the same number of houses. Why is the housing density lower on Fourth Street and Sixth Street? Because when those streets were developed, you had to have an acre to, or, to be able to put in a well and septic tank. And those, none of those people had water or sewer when they bought those homes. They do now because the city has subsequently developed that with an eight-inch sewer line on the west end of the property and six inches of water on St. Paul, but not when they were developed. So, that's the only reason that that density is that way. Otherwise, it's a statistic that means nothing, because when you drive down the street, you're gonna see the same number of houses on Fifth Street as you do on Fourth Street or Sixth Street. So, on housing density, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just, I'm struggling with that, but it has been addressed in the PUD very carefully. And then we keep talking about the street being too long, the cul-de-sac. We're in a neighborhood, there's nothing but cul-de-sacs. Fourth Street's a cul-de-sac, Sixth Street's a cul-de-sac. St. Paul's a half-mile-long street with no exit anywhere. How'd that happen? There used to be a country club at the end of the street. It's not there anymore. Even when it was there, there was just a turnaround there. And if you wanna talk about traffic congestion, well, then you should talk about what happens when five hundred people leave a country club at the same time. We don't know what traffic congestion is. I, I mean, I'm not arguing with whether there ought to be a light at the end of St. Paul or not, but I, I see no reason to panic because there's gonna be thirty-four new houses. And the final point, and by the way, that's the reason for the PUD. You can't have a, a cul-de-sac longer than a thousand feet, so it's eleven-eighty-seven, so you put in a PUD. The first two hundred and fifty feet of that street, there are no houses. You might have, ought to requested an exception for that. Had I been the developer, I'd have said the first two hundred and fifty feet are not part of the cul-, the, the street length. It's merely access. And, and to the point that the street is somehow or another inconsistent with the neighborhood on the, the, the side lot setbacks, that street was dedicated by this city before either one of those people bought that house in nineteen eighty-five. And they had their eyes wide open when they moved in, that there was a street easement between those houses and that someday it might be, be developed. And yes, it does meet the side lot setback, or you would have never approved the easement in nineteen eighty-five. So, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just really a little bit confused. I think there's a lot of misinformation going around. I think there's a lot of people sitting in this chamber that may have got a letter like this. And I'm just gonna read one sentence from it. "If approved, this development will adversely affect the water and sewage drainage and traffic and people flow not only in immediate neighborhood but also in the surrounding areas." You know, there's so many things wrong with that sentence, I don't even know where to start. But you couldn't affect the sewage in an adjacent neighborhood if you wanted to. It's going into an eighty-inch closed line. So, if you come to the meeting because you received a letter like this, I get it. I get why there's a lot of people here. I'd be upset, too. You know what? I've owned this property a long time, and I can continue to own it. And so, I'm not here to put on blinders and act like any economic development is good economic development. And I completely, wholeheartedly concur with everything that was said over here about they just want it done right. But you know what? I think the first time out of the chute, it was wrong, and everybody knew it, and it got tabled and withdrawn. The second time out of the chute, I think we're still punishing them for the same reasons. If you'll go read your seventy-eight-page report carefully, you'll find that many of the things that were brought up here have been addressed. This staff knows what they're doing. They've given you a good recommendation. And I'll be confused if this council believes that this is not good economic development for the city of Midwest City. Someone is trying to spend five to ten million dollars to upgrade this eight acres, and you're gonna tell them no. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Blue. I'm gonna get my, uh, two cents in here. Mr. Blue, I, I, I want you to know that I've known you a long time. I have the utmost respect for you. You don't need to come back down. I'm just, and I appreciate your comments. But the one thing that was left out of both comments is these folks right over here. We're elected to represent our constituents. There's a huge gap in the, not only this country, but the state of government not paying to, paying attention to the people that elect us. And we disregard their wishes. This group of individuals have come to us not once, not twice, but three times about this development. Obviously, the biggest issue is density and the resulting runoff. And that hadn't been addressed. With that being said, um, yeah, we are tasked with undoing the sins of our fathers. Uh, just like Mr. Burns said, I get the phone calls, he gets the phone calls, we all get the phone calls about drainage issues. And in some, and sometimes, sometimes it's way too far into the mix for us to do anything as a city. Sometimes we're lucky. We've been lucky the last three times. But I cannot sit up here as the mayor of the city of Midwest City, being duly elected, I hope, by most of you, and ignore their wishes. I have to take that in consideration. I fully understand that this PUD or this plot of land will be developed at some point. You have the full right of being a citizen in the United States and a property owner to develop that land. But we also have a responsibility to our constituents to make sure it's done right. With that being said, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote, either to approve or deny the zoning request.
Do we need a motion, or are we just approve or deny?
Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I need a, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the zoning request. And, and they would be against the zoning request.
I think Pat, you made that motion earlier.
I made a motion to deny the request.
We'll go forward with that motion. I have a motion and a second. Go ahead with the roll call vote. I'm sorry.
Ward one, I'm sorry, clarification. To deny, correct.
To deny the zoning request.
Yes, deny.
Deny.
Deny. Court four.
Deny.
Five.
Uh, I sustain, uh, because I like development, but I would like to see something else done.
Sustain is not such a thing. You have to abstain.
You abstain?
Yes, abstain.
Mayor.
Deny. The, uh, zoning request is hereby denied by the city council. Thank you for being here. With that being said, we'll move into discussion item number three.
Discussion item number three, discussion and consideration of appointing a ward five and ward six citizen to the animal ordinance review committee established at the December eleventh, two thousand eighteen city council meeting to review and make recommendations regarding Midwest City animal ordinances relating to chapter eight, animals and fowl, including articles one through ten.
Okay, does, uh, ward five and ward six have a, uh?
I have mine, sir.
You have, have yours?
Uh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I have Shane Bernard.
Shane Bernard for ward five and due for?
Bo Peeler.
Oh, okay, cool.
Have to ask the city attorney.
Oh, you can't, oh, okay.
Do we have Shane on the board?
We, we've got, uh, we've got a couple of city employees that do serve on. One, one's on tree board. Another one's on parking rec, I believe.
Okay, so, you're, you're saying though, right?
In their same fields, though? I mean, I mean, the other, the other same.
Who's on the park board, Vaughn? The tree board, I, we, we had an employee on that before, but.
We, in the past, have had a park board member that was a city employee and a tree board member that was a city employee. But that was, that's been long since float down the river. Yeah.
So, it's the opinion of the city attorney that we cannot?
Who?
Okay.
Cannot, okay. Well, I have.
Not on the park board.
Christine, do you have another appointment?
Yes, uh, I have one that, uh, I'm waiting for him to, them to get back from out of town, but, um, they wanna make a decision. But you said we cannot do that?
We don't have time. We've got, they, this board needs to get back to us.
March, March twelfth is what the date says.
March the twelfth? Okay.
They've got a couple meetings they need to do to take care of it.
But when, when is the first meeting?
Well, we're waiting for the representatives to be identified by the council.
And then you would schedule a meeting the following week?
Yes, ma'am, that's why. I'm here to just tell you what the format's gonna be after you make your decision who's gonna be on the board.
Okay, I have, um, uh, I appoint Lex Allen.
Okay, we have appointments from, uh, everybody we need from appointments for?
Bo Peeler.
Bo Peeler.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's fine. Well, no, the thing else is I have someone, but they're out of town. But Mr. Allen, Lex Allen, be happy to serve on that committee.
So, the, her question earlier was, the person, she hasn't had a confirmation from them, but can she go ahead and appoint this person?
I can.
And then, if, if they don't agree, then I guess we just leave it.
Okay, it's Ronald Steele. S.T.I.L.
Mayor, make a motion to approve from ward five Ronald Steele and ward six Bo Peeler.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Does anybody have anything for the chief?
Thank you for your hard work, chief.
Thank you. I just have one comment for the mayor and council. Now that we've had some names identified, as soon as we get the contact numbers, Lieutenant Josh Heron and Adrian Sanders, our animal welfare supervisor, will start the meetings. It may be more than a couple of meetings. It may be several meetings. But our plan is to go extensively through chapter eight, which deals with animals and fowls. Make any recommendations to the council on any changes that need to be made to the ordinance. So, if there's any direction the council or mayor would like to give to me, I'm here tonight to get that direction from you.
Thank you, chief. That being said, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we ask to include dogs in with that? Or did, okay. Okay, right, okay. I'm sorry.
That's, that's quite all right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
Uh, discussion item number four. Discussion item number four is discussion and consideration of, one, establishing an ad hoc ordinance oversight council committee to oversee ordinance updates, and, two, appoint three members of the city council. This is an item that we had on the November twenty-seventh city council agenda, and we, we were directed to bring that back to council.
Motion to approve Susan Eats, Pat Vernon, and Matt Dukes.
I have a motion and a, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item?
Next item is discussion five. Discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending the Midwest City Code, thirty-one twenty-one, chapter one, general provisions, sections, or section one through fifteen, and municipal code three thousand five, chapter twenty-eight, offenses miscellaneous, article eight, dangerous drugs, section twenty-eight to one thirty-three, and providing for repealer and severability. The city attorney will handle this item.
The materials indicated the difference, um, of the fines that would be collected, the, uh- The materials indicated the difference, um, of the fines that would be collected, the, uh, intent is to be more in line with what other municipalities in the metropolitan area are doing in regard to specifically possession of marijuana, and have, uh, a sliding scale of fines that would be applied for the first offense for an individual that would not have a medical marijuana card. Uh, it would be a hundred dollars. For third and subsequent offenses, it would go up to the maximum statutory allowed amount of eight hundred, um, with, um, corresponding potential jail sentences of ten days for the first and second offense, and sixty days for the third and subsequent offenses. For individuals who have a medical condition but do not have their medical card, the first and second offenses would be a hundred with no subsequent jail or corresponding jail time, and the third and subsequent offenses would be four hundred, again, with no corresponding jail time. The, um, changes, again, correspond to the state statute, uh, changes that were put into effect with, um, seven eighty-eight.
I point out that, um, these changes, maximum, um, cost to the city of changing this ordinance would be about a hundred and thirty-one thousand, though I think that number's probably a little bit high because we don't generally, on the first offense, now at the eight hundred dollar mark, um, impose the full fine.
And we were going to lose some anyway because a, a good number of people were going to have medical marijuana cards and they wouldn't be getting ticketed, so I, I.
That's correct, I would agree with that.
So I, I would like to commend staff. They have worked extraordinarily hard. Brandon has been involved, Chief Clipes, Heather, and Tim, very, rolled their sleeves up and got into this, and puts us in, in, in a good place. We've, we've made it to where we have followed the will of the voters, sixty-three percent of Midwest Cityans voted for medical marijuana, fifty-seven percent of the state did. Um, we've made it to where the first two offenses are not so punitive that people can't afford them like they are today. Brandon, tell your police officers we have listened to some of their complaints about some of our fees being too high. Um, and, and I agree with them, and I think staff did as well. But I just want to thank you three specifically for your hard work on this.
Mayor, if I can make a few comments from a police department perspective, as you know, you come from that culture, Mr. Byrne comes from Oklahoma City. It's not being less on crime, it's being on smarter on crime. In fact, uh, Mr. Byrne has myself and Guy Henson involved in the custom, just, criminal justice reform group with Oklahoma City Chamber, uh, Edmund and Midwest City in Oklahoma City. Uh, our officers embrace this, you know, currently we're doing site release on minor or small possessions of marijuana, shoplifting charges based on criminal history, driving under suspension. We're trying to, to do our best part as far as our, our delivery of law enforcement services. Obviously, there are some crimes that people need to be put in jail and we have to do traditional law enforcement, but there's also reformed justice. We embrace that, uh, I, I want to give accolades to Sean Reed, he's brought this to our attention. Our fines and fees were, were extremely high in reference to this crime, and it's more in line with, with the punishment. And, uh, I think you'll find that officers will have the ability to do a better job with their discretion in the field when they come across this, because we'll see more of it. Uh, I think times are changing, not in Oklahoma, but across the United States as far as marijuana. And if it does help someone who needs that, uh, we're all for that, uh, if they have a medical need and necessary for that. But, uh, we, uh, we understand the reasoning for the lowering of the fees. It's not that we aren't doing our job, or the mayor and council aren't in, enforcing the laws of the city of Midwest City or the state of Oklahoma, we're just being smarter about it. So I just want to make those comments.
And we're giving the judge still discretion, which was one of the issues that he, he thinks was very important, not just for him, but the other judges, that they have discretion to, to do a little bit different, up to the max, but they can do lower if they choose to.
Well, it's, it's obvious, chief, and that we cannot continue to lock them up and warehouse them. Uh, we're paying a heck of a price for that right now, so I appreciate everybody's efforts, and we'll move forward. We may, uh, we may have some disagreements about it, but it's a smart thing to do, and thank you. Thank you, Ms. City Attorney, and thank you, Sean, for spearheading this.
For you close, I know you're making your closing statement here, I just wanted to say quickly.
Swing for the fences, Ms. Allen.
I just, I just want to say this, I just want to say thank you. Uh, I had, uh, received emails from, um, concerned people, um, I, well, Midwest City residents, and I did forward it to you, and they were concerned about the, uh, the fees also. But I just want to say on this criminal justice reform force, nonviolent, I think it's really great that we are lowering fees and trying to keep people out of jail, because, uh, I, I think they, it's not the best place when they can be properly rehabilitated instead of in jail. And I know that fines have a good, uh, source of making, of people being able or having to be in jail because of the fee. So I, I like what you all have worked on, I appreciate all the work you have done, because it's time for a change and try to do the right thing to have the citizens to stay out of jail and try to be productive citizens, so thank you.
Well, you need to thank Councilman Reed, he's one who brought this to our attention.
Thank you.
And, uh, you have to understand, we have a mental health substance abuse clinician in-house that, that, uh, we're all about trying to help the citizens of Midwest City when they come through our doors here at Midwest City Police Department. We're the only city in the state of Oklahoma that does that, so I'm very proud of what our officers do and what the city does as a whole, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much, and I hope other cities mimic after us, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh.
Multiple seconds, so, uh, I assume the discussion's over and we can move ahead with the vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, I think the motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, when we move into the new business public discussion of our agenda, be advised that, uh, if you do have anything to bring before the council, we cannot engage in you, with you in a public discussion since it's not a agenda item, but, uh, you can always contact us, uh, later on, to, uh, to maybe get an agenda item on, uh, on the agenda for discussion.
But we can discuss it with them if we step off after the meeting out there.
If you care to do so, yes, sir, you sure, sure can. So with that being said, uh, Glenda Bradley, uh, you had signed up to talk to council? Ms. Bradley, could you state your name and address for the, for the record?
If I knew my address, I would be more than happy to. My name is Glenda Bradley. My actual address is in Del City, it's eighteen twelve Ina May.
Okay.
I'm trying to fix up a house on Christine that I, that I ended up with. The house has been vacant for more than fifteen years. Code enforcement will not leave me alone. This house is in bad condition. I've had to put a lot of money into it. I intend to live in it, and I intend to make it a nice home, again. But it didn't get in this condition, the yard and everything, overnight, it took at least fifteen years. And they want me to clean it up in ten days? Can't do it, sorry. You know? I'd be more than happy to make reports every other month on how much progress I've made with pictures and everything. It's going to take me time, it's going to take me money.
Yes, ma'am.
Which I have very little of. I would rather have had a tiny home. I didn't get a tiny home. I got a bigger home with a lot of work needed. And I have big plans for it, for a big garden that I would be more than happy to share if it produces, you know? And I just need you to get code enforcement off my back. I've got pictures to show what I have done with cleaning the yard up in front, but some of these things have been there for over fifteen years. And code enforcement has never once had my, this was my sister and brother-in-law's home. They never once told them to cut the trees down. I had the house for less than two weeks. Well, I take it back, a month and two weeks. And I put the trash in my name. Two weeks later, they cited me. You know? To cut down all the stuff outside the fence toward the, toward the road. Well, got the whole family together, got it cut down, I made at least between six and ten loads of rush to the dump. Okay? Didn't get it all, some of it was my fault, you know, did not make it, okay? So when code enforcement cited me on that, I have some renters that owed me some rent, so I asked them to, to work it off. Okay? Now, these are people that work cutting down trees, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I told them, do not cut anything else down until I can get what's already down taken care of. Anything big that can go in the fireplace, please cut it up and stack it in the backyard. They stacked it in the front. The small stuff, they were supposed to put on my trailer, they didn't. They raked my yard, I can rake, you know? They raked my yard, put it in big plastic bags, about twenty of them, set them in the yard. You know, I got code enforcement again. Well, we've taken care of that to the best of our ability. We all have the flu now, thank you. I just want the time to fix it. You know? And I, I need some help, you know? Can't do it by myself.
Mr. Mayor, I would have to step down with Christine and Mike once we're done here to discuss with them if we could move forward, and.
No problem.
It isn't Christine's ward.
No problem.
I, I know her, so I might.
All right, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you for coming to council and expressing your, uh, issue with us. Uh, we're, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, but, uh, Mr. Reed is, uh, is going to step down and.
Give us until we take a recess or we get ready to go to executive session, and Christine and I, can you give us a little bit of time and we'll come down?
Okay, would you like to look at the pictures?
I will, yeah, but when we get, yes, ma'am. Well, we'll stand ten foot away from you.
Laura, were you the second one? Okay, so you're together, so we're good. You're right. Is there any one else that has anything to bring before the council? Okay, uh, I'm going to hold you to that, Ms. Willard.
Sorry, I was running behind.
I didn't know we let realtors get up here and speak.
Oh, come on, man. Don't be hating now.
It's that constitution again, ma'am.
Hey. That, that covers realtors?
And, uh, I want to say I'm sorry to hear about Guy, I hope he's doing okay this evening.
Uh, as far as we know, yes.
Good, good deal. Okay, so just want to throw some numbers out there. I'm here on behalf of Day Blue, I have the property over there on St. Paul listed. And, uh, was talking to, been talking to Austin Fisher and some other guys, and we've even talked before, you know, what can we do to get more housing in Midwest City? And development, that's the only way to do it. Um, we're getting our butts kicked in housing in Midwest City. There's a lot of things going on, uh, with the warrant coming in, restaurants, other stuff like that. And I know a lot of people look at, uh, look at, you know, this coming in, looking at things like that. Right now, it kind of give you an idea of how I did this search. Because when I get people coming in from out of state, uh, school district's very important. You know, I live in Choctaw, I live in Midwest City Limits, but Choctaw schools, but I, my, my son goes to Carlisle. Okay? Carlisle's great, Midwest City's great, I got, uh, friends in Choctaw. But that's how we kind of do our searches, based on school districts, okay? So kind of give you an idea, running this down real quick, because when I get people at Tinker Air Force Base that are coming in, a lot of times they just want to be within a radius of the base, okay? Um, one of our biggest competitors is Moore, the city of Moore, which is, you know, we're probably neck and neck with, uh, you know, the number of people that live there, sixty thousand, around sixty thousand, Midwest City and Moore, okay? But let me just tell you, if you don't have the inventory, people aren't going to come here. And we lack the inventory, okay? If you don't have the product, people can't buy it. And right now, in Moore, there's ninety-five active properties within Moore School District, okay? Last year, they sold seven hundred and seventy houses. I know I sell a lot over there, okay? Uh, Choctaw, a little smaller, you know, they got forty-one active, they did a hundred and ninety-four. Edmund, we've talked about Edmund, we lose a lot to Edmund. Seventy-eight active, they sold seven hundred and forty-three houses last year. This is between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand, okay? I know we don't like the St. Charles property, the development over there, you know, I know it's not the best. I didn't like Oakwood Landing, I think Rouse Coleman, you know what kind of house they build? But it's affordable housing in that price range. You get somebody coming out to start at Tinker Air Force Base starting out at forty-five thousand, they're going to be between that a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollar price range. Everybody wants the three hundred thousand dollar plus homes in their city, but that's not what people are buying, especially Tinker Air Force Base, if you think about it, okay? Midwest City, forty-four active properties, nineteen pending. We only sold a hundred and seventy-nine last year, between one fifty and two hundred thousand. There's, that means there's a lot of people that went on to other cities. And I think that we talk about, and I apologize, I didn't get to hear everybody on this, the St. Paul, um, with the rentals, with the homes for sale, the hundred and seventy thousand dollar price range, with St. Paul, you know, I looked it up, the average sales price over there is around sixty-seven thousand dollars. That's fourth, sixth, St. Paul. The average value over there, eighty-seven thousand. So when I'm looking at, because now me and Dave got to go back and we got to say, okay, what are we going to do? Are we going to split it up and do three and then five? How are we going to do that? We're going to get one, maybe four hundred thousand dollar house over there versus thirty homes? The city needs housing. And I know a lot of you look at the drainage issues and the stuff that's going on. Hell, I live in Oakwood East. I've had drainage ever since I moved in, I've had issues ever since I moved in there, still have issues. They're never, never going to correct a hundred percent. And so, you know, I'd love to have a call with anybody who wants to talk about numbers and if any of there, I won't waste any more of your time, but I just want, I was hoping to get a little bit more time before, uh, Dave got up there, but, uh, it sounded like it wouldn't have mattered. But I'd love to sit down with anybody, just talk to them about housing, what we need, where we need it, and, uh, I appreciate the time, give me the time to speak.
Anytime.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Is council to speak in new business and public discussion?
No.
No?
No, we're not.
About, not about what they've said, about something different?
No.
Okay.
No, no, sir, not unless it's an agenda item, I'm sorry. Okay, is there anything else to bring before the council? We're missing a few chairs, but, uh, we've got a quorum. With that being said, uh, no further discussion, we are hereby adjourned. I now call it ordered to the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda, these items are placed on the consent agenda, it's the trustees. By unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees, members of the audience, or the members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be heard, removed and heard in regular order. With that being said, I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Now move into the new business public discussion of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I now call it ordered the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We do have consent agenda, and these items are placed on consent agenda, so that the trustees, by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees, or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Have one discussion item?
Discussion item C one, discussion and consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. We need. We need to, we don't need to have any action on that.
No action needed on that item?
No action needed.
No action needed on that item. We'll move into the new business public discussion of the Midwest City Hospital Authority. Does anybody have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we do have an executive session.
Executive session, consideration of, one, entertaining an executive session is allowed under twenty-five Oklahoma statute, section three oh seven, C ten, to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal entice a business to remain or to locate within the city. And, two, an open session authorizing the city manager to take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Chair, entertain a motion going to executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye. We are hereby in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, be moving upstairs and will not be returning to the council chambers.